Good afternoon, everyone. This is the time and place for the Grand Forks Growth Committee of October 27, 2025. Staff will take attendance.
Berg. Crary. Friedhoff.
Here.
Holf.
Here.
Wazowski.
Here.
Whitney. Wolf.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
All right, thank you. All right. Item number two, approval of meeting minutes for September 15th and September 29th. Would like to approve some minutes?
I move approval as presented.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approval is unanimous. All right. Item number three, pace loan request for Ideal Aerosmith.
Thank you Chair Friedhoff, members of the committee. So Ideal Aerosmith is a Grand Forks based company. They provide a wide array of industrial products and services to their clients around the world. The company is experiencing really significant growth right now and the this project's kind of key to building on that, continuing that momentum. So I think I'll have Kevin from the EDC come up and give some further background on that and then I can circle back on the financial piece.
Thank you Chairman Friedhoff, members of the Growth Fund Committee. So just like Andy said, Ideal Aerosmith, they are a company that's utilizing specialized services and array of industries. It can be a defense, UAS especially as you see a lot of the public announcements in the last year here. It could be as small as inertial testing or sensors, as small as a phone, a cell phone, or it could be as large as a farming tractor. So using those sensors capabilities, that's manufactured and tested here in Grand Forks. Additionally, they're headquartered here, right on 3001 South Washington. They do have two other locations and as we've experienced in the past year here and especially in the jobs development authority of an agreement for purchased property out of the business park. Now that helps them with their long-term growth and their long-term vision. But this and since here, as Andy was mentioning, this is a need for a solution in the short term here because they're bursting at the seams here at their current facility. So that's what this project is all about, is an expansion opportunity of about 8,000 square feet on their current facility on the south end of their headquarters. What that is going to do is going to help them expand their assembly there and their storage capabilities there at their facility. Overall, a $2.5 million project resulting from that. One thing that I would like to note related to the last pace request back in 2024, what was displayed in that application, they were sharing that current employment of 129 full-time employees with anticipation of growth within the next 24 months of 160 employees. Well, they knocked it out of the part. What they're displaying here is they're at 162 right now in 2025 here with plans to even grow further with 180 full-time employees as well. So with that, we're looking at that 2.5 million like I mentioned. Oh, also I should mention, we have Greg Owens, the President CEO here as well, and Stacy Warcup VP of Finance, and also John from Bank Forward who's here if there's any company or finance related questions too. So what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Andy to display the full financing details and then we can open up for questions.
Thanks Kevin. So the real quick to the financial piece of this is that it is a $2.5 million project funded in part by that Bank Forward note of $2 million. We're being asked to provide a loan of $161,539 to leverage $300,000 from B&amp;D that buy the interest rate down to 2.25%. Payment on that would be deferred for just shy of five years and then repaid over 12 months as normal and it's secured via subordinate mortgage as well as personal guarantees from the company's owners in Greg and Robin Owens. That I think will stand for any questions?
I have comments, I don't have any questions. First off, this is a perfect type of business that I think that we should really be focusing on, on making sure that we give loans to. One, I love watching their employee growth. I mean, they're constantly hiring. I know a couple of people that work there and they rave about what a wonderful company they are. Number two, the other thing that I really like is they're actually paying their employees livable wages, you know, at that, what was it, 48 point something dollars an hour and they're trying to get up to 50. I think that that is fabulous and I love them being a part of our community and so I move approval. Thank you.
And just real quick, I love watching this growth as well, this being in this industry and met a couple of times out on your site. It's phenomenal to see the work you guys do and anyone that hasn't been there, I highly advise you to go see some of the stuff that they build. It's pretty cool. All right, can I get a second? Oh, do you have a question?
More just to comment again, Mr. Owens, thank you for your ongoing investment. It is, I would agree with Mrs. Selsky, Mr. Chair Friedhoff's, fun to watch you grow, glad you're growing here. This is, I think structured the right way and so I appreciate that. So excited to watch you continue to grow and it looks like there's going to be more in the future out in the industrial parks. So I'll second with that.
I got a first and a second. Do you have a comment?
What else am I supposed to say after that?
You're supposed to say how wonderful they are.
Ditto to everything that's been said up here.
All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number four, loan modification request for Dolan LLC.
Yes, thank you Chair Friedhoff. So Valley Tech Pros went out of business back in 2023. I mean, at that time had two outstanding loans with the Growth Fund Committee or with the Growth Fund JDA rather, a startup loan and then a C run loan or COVID response. We call it the EDARLF program now. Rather than default on those at the time, Lisa Johnson, who is here in the audience, offered to continue repaying those loans on a slightly modified schedule, which certainly want to give her a shout out for, she was not legally obligated to do so, but has really shown some incredible integrity in working to repay those loans, which we certainly appreciate. I also mentioned to her, we certainly appreciate the staff that she has been exceptionally diligent in paying each of those monthly payments since that time without fail. One of the lowest maintenance borrowers we have, which we certainly appreciate. So today's proposal, it developed in conjunction with Ms. Johnson is a path forward on both of these loans that over the next two years structured similarly to how we did the first time. You'll note in there as well that it is a path forward to repaying one of the loans in full over that two-year timeframe. The startup loan, if approved as presented, Ms. Johnson has volunteered to or asked to increase her monthly payment on that startup loan, which will, over the 24 months, repay that loan in full. The plan then would be is after, same as before, is after 24 months, we'd have that balloon payment due on the C run loan and only the C run loan at that point, where we could then again have a conversation, see what works and what's a workable solution forward to retiring that loan as well. So all from our perspective, a very positive result so far. It's sort of unfolding exactly how we had hoped when we approved this originally. And again, just want to give Ms. Johnson her due credit for continuing to stick with these loans over this time. So happy to stand for any questions as I'm sure would Ms. Johnson.
So just first, thank you. One of the things we really, we like to see in everybody is communication and you're doing exactly what we would need you to do. I think it's super important and showing up today just to, you know, to answer any questions and it's never easy to talk about, you know, having to pay back a loan that because of a company that's not happening. So appreciate it and we'll see if anyone has any questions. Rebecca?
Yeah, I just have comments. Thank you also for just working with us. I think that that is something that we really, like we really try to work with the people that we give the loans to and, you know, you continuously just making an effort to pay back the loans, that's greatly appreciated. And I guess I have no issue with working with her, you know, so I move approval.
First, do I have a second?
I'll second. Yeah, I would just add gratitude to Lisa. I think this is, we've talked about this almost every month that we've met, just the importance of communication and now Lisa, you've been called low maintenance on the public record, so that's a good thing. We have that in the minutes, so appreciate it and I agree. I think when we can offer flexibility like this, if someone's willing to work with us, I think we showed that we're willing to work with them. So I think it's great. Thank you.
Mr. Wolf?
Yeah, one more comment. Again, thank you for being here. Thank you for communicating. This is in business. Things don't always work according to plan, but how you're navigating through that's appreciated and that's what we like here in this region is working together through those types of obstacles. So appreciate you being here and all your communication. So I think we are all in favor of this one, but go ahead Chair.
All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you Ms. Johnson. All right, number five, information only, past due loan update.
Okay, so we have three past due for African Arts Arena, COTH Investments and Integrity Fundraisers. Do have some good news on that. African Arts Arena did send in a payment, so they are currently caught up to date and Integrity Fundraisers paid 1,500, so they now just are behind by one payment. And I was unable to reach COTH Investments, so I will continue trying to reach them just to let them know that they're behind. Their last payment was the beginning of September, but they were quite behind from previous payments. So we'll continue trying to reach out to them. We'll bring it forward again next month. Happy to stand for any questions.
Yeah, thank you for one, making an attachment. I would like to see an attachment with a little bit more information. I would like to see, you know, a date when we issued the loan, even the last payment that we received, just have a little bit more detail in front of us and, but at least you collected some funds. But if we could just start a nice little spreadsheet with that, that would be great just so when we all look at it, we know exactly kind of what we're looking at. So thank you.
Yeah, it was kind of along my lines too. It's like, how many months do we go, right? Until we bring Mr. Gosstead into it? So just we'll keep an eye on it and go from there. Yes, sir.
No, I agree with the comments and appreciate you bringing it forward and making those phone calls. Another thing that along these lines would be what the, Mrs. Selsky said the original date, but even the original note amount. Obviously, I think there have been payments that have been made, but to remind us as a group about what it started at, where it's at today, last payment's an important one just to show, but those would be my comments. But do appreciate your work here and actually having an attachment for us.
Yes, and we can easily pull that report with all that information. So I'll make a note of that for next month to include that.
I move adjournment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole for Monday, October 27th, 2025, under item one, call to order 1.1, welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Sawski.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Lumske.
Here.
Friedals.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
President Sandy.
Here.
We're all present, have a corn.
Great, thank you. Under item two, informational items, 2.1 Beacon Development Project, Mr. Phelan.
Council President Sandy and members of the committee whole, thanks for having us here this evening. Dan Gosted, Maureen and I thought we would give you an update, also the developer, two of the developers regarding this project, I'm trying to move it forward, are here, also Craig Tweetin and Kevin Ritterman. I just wanted to give you an update on this project since it's banned, probably a couple councils by now, so this project started in probably about five years ago, and I just wanted to give you an update, and we wanted to give you an information update and get some feedback to city council before we formally bring this forward to the committee of the whole and council and start the whole process again. Maureen put this together, and you know, about five years ago, if you look on the right side, I think we had a closed hotel, the former townhouse that was defunct at that time, and so, right now, the first request for city council on behalf of the developers is to change the development agreement that currently calls for an 80% TIF revenue bond to a 80% 15-year payment a little tax, so you can see the various structures, number one, what that property was bringing in in taxes back in the day, and if you go, Maureen took it over 30 years, you know, that would have, if we would have kept everything the same, that's 1.3 million, with the 25-year bond, that was going to bring in 8.9 million, and if we can flip it to 80% pilot, that'll bring in additional $15 million, so, the win is if we can, if we can get the project to move forward, add the third building, move it to a pilot, it's a win for all the taxing entities, and as we've heard from both the school board and the county, they're interested in additional tax revenue, so this would be a win. The reason why the city council back in the day approved a revenue bond, TIF revenue bond, we don't do many of those in our history, is they, the city council granted an 80% incentive, TIF incentive, that would go towards paying a revenue bond, and that 80% of the revenue for both, all three buildings, would go towards paying the public event square, and with three buildings, I'm going to give you some round numbers, with three buildings, the revenue bond was going to support a $67 million public plaza investment, with two buildings, I think it was like four to five million dollar public event square, so that's why the city did that, the remaining 20% went to all the taxing entities, so everyone got some revenue upfront with the remaining portion of that going towards the revenue bond. The other thing I wanted to show, Maureen did calculations here, and right now, 20, if you look at tax years 23, 24, and 25, if we include that, all told, we estimate the amount of revenue that should be set aside for that revenue bond should be 844,000, which is this, and you can see right now, they're still outstanding to be paid in '24, and then in '25, we just estimated, because this 844,000 is going to come into play later. This was a site planned, the general site plan, and as you know, this building is upright currently right now, the, this is the east building, and the parking lot has been built, there's a stage right here that's been built, this parking lot has not been built at this time, nor the plaza has been, has not been, this second building, or the western building, has been built, and then the proposal is for a third building to go out front here, which would be the third building. These are some of the renderings from back in the day, and you can see where the eastern building is up, the western building is up, and this would be the third building, it was intended to be a four-season public plaza, similar to what West Fargo has with the lights, and so you can see where this is the ice configuration, the next one would be obviously a play, and really the hope was this would be, really add amenities during the winter for tournaments, and so, teams that come in and play every weekend, you would not only be able to play indoors, but you'd also have one outdoor game, so that was kind of the attraction for the, for the ice itself. The other part was an event space, and this was really meant to be programmed similar to the lights, so that things that were happening at the lights at the time would come.[1800.63] The other part was an event space, and this was really meant to be programmed similar to the lights so that things that were happening at the lights at the time would come, also be able to come to Grand Forks, and we'd be able to add some of our local amenities to it, too. So it'd be more of a concert, larger concert venue. I think we were anticipating up to 4,000 attendees could do it, and if you ever been to the lights, it'd be similar to that venue from a concert perspective. The last part was a, beyond the concert venue was a splash park, which was going to be out front here, that could be for general use in the downtown community. So that was the concept of that. And then finally, we've been speaking with the developers, and these are all estimates that we've talked with the developers, and so plus or minus, they're either right or wrong on all these. And so right now, the public plaza cost estimate is about 2.3 million to do, I would call it the warmer weather concert venue or event venue. The outdoor arena, to include the permanent ice and chiller, is about $2 million. And then in building, I'm going to say the, I think it was the western building, there was meant to be kind of restrooms and a locker room space for events. Restrooms for, you know, warmer events, and then during the winter for hockey events, there was going to be a locker room. And so there, there's, there's a space in the first building in which would need to be fitted up for, for that use that has not been done at this point in time. So right now, we're estimating about $4.6 million to get that all up and going. And the sense, the thought is, if we're going to do this event, we got to do it right, whether it's in the warm weather or in the cold weather. And so the city of Grand Forks would look like, look for an investor for the, the ice arena itself, for that 2 million. Marine and finance have continued, and you continue to approve the 1.1 million dollars from beautification funds. So that's what this 1.1 million is. And Marine was telling me the other day, it's actually 1.15, but we're all dealing with rounding ears on this project at this point in time, too. The 844,000, that's where I showed what we anticipate after three years would be set aside. And so that would be a request for the city of Grand Forks, but also our two other taxing entities, both the school board and the county commission. Requests would have to be made that they would also assign those monies to this public plaza. And because the, we're not going to sell a revenue bond, but we'd want that, those revenues dedicated to the public plaza and its improvement would be, would be a request. The developer, right now, we have developer contribution of about 700,000, and that gets you to about 4.6 million. And so those numbers would have to be massaged and figured out along the way. And even though we need permission on some of the funding parts with our, our local government entities, the bigger ask is really for the city of Grand Forks. Because not only do we have cash grant funds in here, but the request would also be that we would own that public plaza. And then once we own it, we gotta, we've got to manage it. And so whether it's, you know, programming it, whether it's operating, whether it's maintaining it, it would be on the city of Grand Forks. And back in the day when Epic was going to run this, they had a events organization that was going to run the events. Obviously, that has gone, gone away at this point in time. So our thought is if the city council was interested in continuing to want to seek out this public plaza, we would look to a third-party manager. And like, we'd reach out to OVG, who manages, or Oakview Group, who manages the Alaris Center, and have them to operate this space on our behalf and make it an addition to the Alaris Center agreement. Two other things that the developer is looking to make improvements on is currently, there are two floors of commercial, and as part of their reinvestment, they would turn the second floor into residential units. And I think they are roughly estimating about 10 to 12 units would be added on the second floor, both of the current buildings. And I think that's probably a million to million and a half per building that they would have to invest in to make that happen. So as part of looking to the third building, they would retrofit the second floor of the building and add more housing, and then they'd be down to one floor of commercial in this development. All those reinvestments, including the third building, would all get wrapped into a pilot in lieu of the, of the TIF bond, and that's 80% over 15 years. And I think when Marine did the financial analysis, she assumed three buildings. We're assuming the second floor of both the initial two buildings are residential, not commercial. And so that's one question. Are you good with transitioning from a revenue bond or TIF bond to a pilot? And if that's yes, the second questions are, is this, do we, with those proceeds at 844,000, are you interested in investing that into the public plaza and asking our other taxing entities to participate in that? And the third item, which is, does the city want to own this space and do we want to program it and operate it? That's kind of where we're at right now. I would turn it over to Mr. Gosted, just to talk about the current development agreement that we have, and then if Marine wants to really follow up and crystallize any of the things that we've talked about.
All right. Thank you, members of the committee. There was a, there was an original development agreement, and then there was an amendment because Epic wanted some funds. The 1.1 million advanced earlier than, than what was expected under the original agreement. The original agreement was the plaza had to be done, and then all the funds would be, would be paid out. They were looking for that 1.1 earlier. And there is going to be mortgages and security interests that we're going to take back on the plaza and another parcel to secure that up. The amended agreement is dated January 8 of 2024. This was with a number of entities, Epic-related entities. First is Epic Holdings, too. And what I did is today, I went onto the North Dakota Secretary of State's website to see if they're still in good standing. This entity is still in good standing. The registered agent is a gentleman named Keenan Burning. Then there was another entity called Beacon Land Holdings LLC. It was not in good standing as of today. And they weren't listed because at the time, when we did some title work back in November of 2024, it was the owner of the plaza parcel, and the parcel where Building 3 was going to be located. Epic Management LLC was also a developer under this agreement, and they were part of the development team. They are, they are in good standing as of today, and his registered agent is Keenan Burning. Then it's Beacon NW Real Estate Holdings LLC. That entity, at the time I did the title work back in November of 2024, was the owner of the parcel where the west building is currently located. That is in good standing, and the registered agent is Kevin Ritterman. And then there's Beacon East Real Estate Holdings LLC. That also is in good standing. And at the time, I did my title search back in November of 2024. It was, that entity was the owner of the parcel where the east building is at, and where the parking area is just immediately east of that building as well. And so all of those entities were included because either had an ownership interest or they were part of the development team. The TIF agreement, it's section 7.4, says it is not assignable without the consent of the city. Also, there are various provisions in here that I don't think have been complied with, first of which is under section 7.5. If a developer continues its operations, the agreement can be terminated. Also, there are default provisions under section 6.1.1, namely that the public plaza, the first one I identified was the public plaza had to be started by September of 2023 and completed by July of 2024. If there is going to be an extension, it had to be by agreement from the city to do that. Also, there is a provision that, that we can send out a notice of stoppage, if there's construction stoppage on, on any part of the project, particularly the plaza. That obviously has stopped. The buildings have been, have been completed, or at least partially completed, except for the commercial space. But the public plaza is not, so a notice could be sent out for a stop, construction stoppage. As far as the early funds, the 1.1 million that we were talking about under the amended agreement, none of the conditions have been satisfied to cause any of those funds to be distributed, nor would there be any basis to do so at this point. Also, the balance of the funds beyond the 1.1, which would be from the TIF revenue, there are also a number of conditions, none of which have been satisfied to even issue the bonds. So there would be a basis to pursue a termination. I think the better course of action, however, is, I understand, and based upon the registered agent with respect to at least two of the entities, that it would be better served by the city to pursue a termination agreement, a voluntary termination agreement amongst the parties. I understand that the attorney representing the current developers has some relationship with the other two Epic entities, sufficient where he believes that we'd be able to pursue a termination rather than doing it ourselves. So we're at the, at the juncture where there are so many things that have not been satisfied under the terms of the agreement that we could move into a different direction if we, if, if the council saw fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gosted.
Sure. Mr. Phelan did a good job going through the numbers here, but just maybe to go through it again. So with this, if you were to move from a 25-year, 80% tax increment funding, financing bond to a 15-year, 80% pilot, all taxing entities would get those fully taxable funds 10 years earlier than prior. Also, the city would not have to carry any, any debt for this. We have not issued any bonds at this time. I also just did that comparison. If no project had, had been completed, it had roughly $2.3 million value. Even at 20% taxed on the, what's been developed is more than 100% taxed prior to any development happening. So you can see those numbers there. The difference between a 25-year and 15-year 80% is roughly 6.5 million. And you can look at those 30-year, and of course, these are estimated numbers.
Thank you, Ms. Philan. Thank you, Ms. Storsted. Questions for, for Mr. Phelan, Ms. Storsted, or Mr. Gosted? Yes, Ms. Wasowski.
Thank you, President Sandy. I guess my first question I have is, are TIFs are non-transferable, correct? Just like pilots?
Under our, under our agreement, the way it's been drafted, it's, the rights and the responsibilities or anything arising out of this agreement is not assignable by the developer without the city's consent.
Okay. Well, number one, I guess I'm in favor of terminating this agreement then, and then kind of moving forward. My, my next thought is, is I guess I was never, I think the hockey arena is a great idea. I really do think, though, that we've kind of tapped out a lot of our spending on this kind of fun stuff. And so I would like to see even the plaza, like, minimalized. I, I mean, I know we already own the Zamboni, but I really think I would like to see a, a better plan for the plaza. And I, I don't agree with a pilot program. I do not think that economic development should come at the cost of our taxpayers. You know, that seems to be really our excuse as a city on why we issue a lot of these things. And I never once have seen my taxes go down because of the economic development money that we're spending. And so I disagree with the pilot. I guess another question I have is, what's going in the third building, then?
Council President Sandy and Council Member Wasowski. The third building, I think, is proposed right now to be a strictly apartment building. That will not have commercial space like the first two.
I also kind of heard that, you know, they really are banking on the public plaza to help rent a lot of that commercial space. And that, that is not the responsibility of the taxpayer to make sure that space gets rented in, in these people's buildings. That's not our responsibility. I understand that we had hiccups with the project and that things might need to change, and maybe we might need to work with them. But I don't agree with the 80%. I think the plaza is way overbuilt and we're way overspending. I also have very high concerns about the operational cost that it's going to take once this is up and running. That is another space that we're going to have to find someone to manage. And I mean, we can barely take care of our town square downtown. You know, the Downtown Development Association is the one mainly picking up a lot of the slack for us. And thankfully, we have them and they care so much, but I don't want another situation like that. I do not even think that the city should contemplate owning something like that at this point. We, you know, we have $100 million facility that we're going to build out by the Alaris, and we're still figuring out, you know, how that, how much that's going to cost to manage and to operate. And here we are, you know, we have a perfect opportunity right now without even, like, we don't even have to go to them and tell them that. We can just terminate the agreement that we had before, and we're kind of cleared on that. And I, I really want us to take a lot of time and really think about what we're building in the center of that. And I'm okay with it being two buildings. I think the stage can still be used. I think it just really needs to be minimalized. And I'm not interested in the city of Grand Forks taking ownership and then having to operate this major plaza because this is the, this is the exact same project. Like, there's been no real changes to the project since this was originally brought to us, correct? I didn't see any real changes to it.
Yep. Really, it's a similar project from a public plaza perspective. It's just, if you do want to move forward, we're presenting a way to fund it in a different way.
The finances have changed significantly, though. I mean, the city of Grand Forks was picking up the entire tab. Now we're in for, what's the total? A couple million plus 800, no, 1.15 plus 845, is that right? So right around 2 million, is that?
You know, of that 844, Marine, I think we're about 26%, 28% of that.
Roughly 26% of that, and it would involve the other taxing entities as well.
Right. Yeah. So.
Yeah. I, I'm not in favor of this. I think it's our perfect opportunity to downscale the project and really rethink who and what we're giving pilots to, and stop and think about what it's going to cost us to even operate that. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wasowski. Further comments? Yes, Ms. Lunskey.
Is the third building required to be completed before the plaza or the funds can be accessed? I think that was in the last.
There, it was. There was actually going to be two tranches of funds that would be paid out. One that was based upon just the two buildings, and then the final amount of funds wouldn't be paid out until the third building was built.
And with the new agreement, will it be the same?
Well, there wouldn't be any, there really wouldn't be any funds going out from a, from a bonding perspective. It would be the 1.1 million in beautification, the city's portion of the 844,000. There would be a transfer of the, as proposed, a transfer of the public plaza to the city once it's completed.
And then the 2.3 million, it says the first, first or second item was the stage. Does that consider what's been done already?
Council President Sandy and Council Member Lunskey, you are correct. Yes, some of these are already existing costs because there has been some site work. Obviously, the stage is up in part at least, so there, there are some sunk costs in the plaza.
Okay. Have we ever considered involving the police department to look at some environmental design? I know some issues we've ran in recently downtown, their input would have been nice. I'm just thinking of like the splash park. It looks like there's no way to kind of close the area in the evenings. Have we considered meeting with the police department for their feedback?
Council President Sandy and Council Member Lunskey, we would do that as part of, and these are concepts from, you know, a few years ago, at least, or several years ago. And so that if you were, if the council was still interested in a public plaza, whether it's, you know, two seasons or four seasons, we would, we would look at the design and make better perfections now that we know more than we did, you know, five years ago.
And then how about the partners that were interested in the ice rink? Are they still interested in? I know, I think it was the Park District possibly was going to fund the chillers?
Yeah. Council President Sandy and Council Member Lunskey, I won't want to name any names, but there were, it wasn't the Park District, but it was organizations that are involved in, in hockey in our, in our community that were, they were interested in partnering because the fact that they, you know, they hold tournaments, it would be another sheet of ice for them. And I think they were interested to make an investment. If the city were leading the project and if it was looking to be a successful. project and if it was looking to be a successful project. And I think it would be one of the asks of, how much funds could they bring to this particular project? We haven't asked those questions yet, but there, there was interest.
Okay. So we don't know if that interest is still there?
Yeah. I think the interest is still there, but I think they're going to want to see the city of Grand Forks is fully behind something and where their, their investment is an incremental amount of a larger piece. And I do agree with Councilmember Osowski. The other part of this is to operate the facility. And even if we hire somebody like Oakview, Oakview Group or OBG, we still, we pay those organizations to manage these things. So as part of, not only the capital, but we'd have to work on an operating plan on revenues over expenses and what that would be. And so we didn't want to go too far down the road until, and just to gauge your interest and if you wanted to, to look at the public plaza further.
And then everyone in Grand Forks' favorite subject, parking. Are we worried about parking with the third building?
I think the parking would be part of that too. I think we always worry about parking. You know, how can we not do a project without worrying about parking? And so I, I, I think we would look at that, similar to the Franklin Building over here. I think there were lots of concerns that parking was going to be a major issue. And certainly, we've shared our, our surface parking lot next door, and I, I don't think we've had any cataclysmic issues there. In a similar vein, we'd have to use our parking ramps with this, and that was the original intent. Not only would we have service parking, underground parking, but we'd also have to rely upon the parking ramps downtown too for parking.
And then last question, have we ever considered having it more of like a rental space? So, you know, people could rent it and have concert, they could put on concerts so it's not on the city's shoulders?
Council President Sandy and Councilmember Lonsky, we thought of like rentals in this, back in the, back in the day where people would be able to be, do additive programming to what the base level was. But I think for, for this space to be effective, I don't think, no one's going to build out something that's, you know, $5 million and, and take a chance that it's going to get rented, I think. So the sense is there's going to have to be some sort of, you know, management of the facility, maintenance of the facility, and that others would be able to rent the space. But if we don't have a, if we don't have a prime user and payer for the facility, no one's going to develop it just for a rental per se.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lonsky. Further comments or questions? Ms. Friedel, yes, sir.
This sounds a very reminiscent. I don't know if anyone's heard of Clearfork in Texas and the Meridian, which is a mall that's out in Idaho. Also with that third building, we, you know, I think we, we'd always talk about more housing, and that's exactly what we need, right? And this, this is a prime real estate, you know? We're not going to get, you know, obviously, it's not going to be inexpensive housing, but you're selling the amenities that go with it. And I think that's pretty important, especially when you got a place for concerts and you're close to the college or downtown. I think this is a pretty, pretty cool little area and a cool concept for going forward. But yeah, those places in, in other states, it's very similar to those where you combine the housing with some really cool commercial real estate there and some, some stuff to do for folks. And I, I don't think they'll, they've had vacancies in the last 10 years. So I think this is a good, a good idea to move forward. Just comments.
Thank you, Ms. Friedel. Further comments or?
Yep.
Yes, Ms. Berg?
I have a couple of questions. How would we potentially fund the third-party manager of, of the site if we were to do this?
Council President Sandy and Councilmember Berg, the first thing we would do is to try to drive the revenue to this space as much as possible, find as many users as possible that are not only willing to invest in the capital, but importantly, invest in the operating. That would be our first thing. We would try to minimize the expenses as much as possible. But similar to other things, we get involved, we probably, we may have a gap. And one of our favorite funds, 2163, would also probably need to be there to help cover any of the shortfalls because there's, there's not any additional revenue other than, you know, creating programs, creating events. And if those don't cover those expenses, we, we would need to look at a third revenue source, which I think would be 2163.
Okay. And do we know who operates the lights in Fargo?
Currently, I'm not sure. I don't know if Mr. Goss, do you know who's operating that?
The last I understood, they, they had a organization, I think it was called West Fargo Events, but I'm not, not sure on that. And I, and if that's the entity, I, I'm unclear as to who's maybe the officers or directors of that particular entity.
And I would just add on, when we, even when we went down there and talked to West Fargo, even at that time when things were going well, this city of West Fargo, obviously, that was a key kind of component to their community in creating vibrancy and, and getting people to do things. They did have contributions to help support that. And then, of course, they have a, I think they have two indoor seats adjacent to the lights through the Park District. And so they had funds in, in there, but they, they were doing, trying to do what, similar to what I did. They had some advantages as that they already had an indoor, their indoor arena was right next door to this sheet. We probably have some advantages is that we're in the downtown built setting, so we didn't have to, you know, build, build everything from scratch like they did in, in West Fargo.
Sure. So it'd be nice to have some infill apartments because the infrastructure is already there. Have we always, already put away that 1.15 million or is that an additional?
Though, Ms. Berg, President Sandy, members of the committee, yes, those funds, those beautification funds have been set aside.
And do, I can't, I can't recall, does the county and school also have to approve the pilot or is that just a TIF?
Council President Sandy and Councilmember Berg, yes, they would have to approve this pilot. Anything over five years, and I, we're asking for 15 years at 80%, so they would have to approve the pilot.
Okay. I, I worry a little bit just with the different statements that they've made, as well as asking them to contribute to that 885, give or take, balance. However, there was so much buzz when this initial development came to Grand Forks, and it was really unfortunate to see it just kind of end up the way it did. And so it's really exciting to see that there's new energy into it and that the project isn't just going to sit there and not be completed. There's people who want to have it completed. They want to invest in downtown. And I think that's a great idea to continue to further explore what else can come from this.
Thank you, Ms. Berg. I, for one, am supportive as well of, of getting the project finished. I don't know if it needs to be cut down. If, if they actually are able to fund half or more with other entities putting in funding to get it done, I think it'd be great. It, it would be a real nice amenity to downtown. However, I, I have no appetite for the city owning it and having on, we have no idea what the annual costs are going to be for managing that facility. We don't know what the power is going to cost us to keep the ice in. We don't know, we know nothing about what it would take to, to run that, that facility. So I, I'd be supportive of moving forward and, and getting the amenities done. But as Ms. Osowski pointed out so astutely, it, it is the benefit, the purpose for it is for the benefit of the owners of the facility. And I, for one, would, I don't know if they, if it's a done deal, if they won't move forward with the third building, if, if the city doesn't own it or not. I just, I, I would need a lot more info before I would support the city owning the plaza and, and covering the cost. That's my opinion.
And maybe I could, Kevin Ritterman's back there for the developer, maybe if, if he had any final words from, from the developers. I'll just, before we put a period on this, on this evening, just have him say, provide some feedback to you two on what they're thinking.
Mr. Ritterman, thanks for being here tonight.
Council Sandy, members of the committee, Kevin Ritterman, Representative Beacon Northwest Holdings, with Craig Tween and I, both on the board of both the entities. I'm sure you're aware of the facts, kind of maybe what's gone on here the last three years, but we've been brought in to clean this mess up. We've been full circle 10 times, trying to figure out what we should do with that plaza, how are we going to fund it? Craig is actually, he's got a lot of lean money out there still, so we're trying to figure that out. He is in the process of owning that plaza land, which was key for us to even be here today to visit with you guys. We'll have control of that soon. So that'll be, that'll be helpful. If you're concerned whether or not you guys should own the plaza or if it should remain private, I think we're open to discussions there. We're not, we're not saying it has to be. I agree with you, we don't know the cost. We were an end-up business. As a recall, we weren't really a part of those guys, so we're just, we're just asked to kind of figure it out. So we're more important, we've got to reinvest some monies. All the equity owners have lost their money. It's flat and simple. So we've got to reinvest. So we're here to really ask, I don't have the six and a half million today, but I will have it for you in, in 15 years. So that's the big thing is really what we need to do is we need to reinvest those properties. We'll clean up that centerpiece, we'll make it viable. Maybe there's some opportunities that we can work together with the city to make it maybe a P3. I don't know. But the third building will go, it's not contingent on that. The commercial, again, we're going to do apartments on the second level on both buildings. We're ready to start pretty soon, as soon as we get a permit, so we got to get through Ryan and, and your folks to get that done. But the third building will go no matter what. Parking is a concern. Be no commercial, if there is commercial on that third building, it'd be very, very, it'd almost be like Selkirk where we have some frontage, but the back is parking. It's going to be two levels of parking and we've got to figure all those things out. So we're not ready to start that building, but there's been some talk. So these guys have been good. We've been keeping everybody kind of in the loop city-wise. We just weren't ready to come back till today to really start the process. We know we have to go ask for forgiveness, and I'm, I'm willing to do that, I would like to do that, I don't even like to be here to talk to you tonight for ask for forgiveness. But we've been put in a position here that is out of our control. So we will be asking for some of the monies that will be paid for the real estate tax, the 80, the 80 cents, if you will. Because we wouldn't have, the taxing entities wouldn't have those dollars anyway, but we need them to reinvest. So again, thank you for your consideration, I guess.
Thank you.
You guys, Todd did a great job.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Ritterman since he's here? Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate you being here. So I, I think just based upon listening to people's discussions, I think there's an appetite for moving forward with, with the plaza. And I, and I also believe that additional discussion related to who owns the property would probably be necessary. So anyone disagree with that?
I disagree with that.
You disagree? Great, okay.
Yes, sir. I don't think that taxpayers really want to subsidize renters amenities. And so I, I don't know. I, I disagree, but yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else disagree with that? Okay. Thank you. Is that all you need, Mr. Phelan?
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, discussion items, 31 lead service line replacement program project 8843. Ms. Barbie, good evening. Now to the rail fund stuff.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. Tonight, I just wanted to provide an update on the lead service line replacement program. There's a number of us from the Water Department that have been working on this for the last couple of years. Myself, Carmen Nuschwander, Dan Hanson, and Grayson Cole. We were reviewing what Bismarck did a couple of years ago and actually had asked DEQ for some addition, or some initial money to try the program. And that was just in 2022. We received $357,000 at a 90% loan forgiveness. So at the time, they had funding where we didn't have to repay that portion of it to help with lead service line replacements. That went fairly well. We got an additional $1 million, a little over $1 million, and are almost done with that funding as well. There's homeowners in Grand Forks that have an interest, and we have about 200 applications where they'd like to continue to do this. So we've asked Department of Environmental Quality if we could have additional funding. When we had estimated what it would take to get through the next 10 years, which is required as part of the loan of the improvement program, we had estimated about 16 million. They had said that they weren't sure they had that much, but they were able to give us 12.8 million. And that was at a 66% loan forgiveness. So they've kind of dwindled how much they're participating from the federal government standpoint. However, that should be able to help us get through and finish out over the next 10 years the loan or the replacement program. And so we're asking tonight to consider extending our program, which is part of that project 8843, and accept that additional funding from the Department of Environmental Quality. We do currently have 925 lead service lines in Grand Forks that are documented. We have an additional 68 that are galvanized, and that is part of the program, can be replaced. We have 644 that are actually unknown. And as part of the improvement rule, the ones that are unknown documented have to be determined as lead until we can determine that they're not. So we do have quite a few out there, but we're learning with, communicating with residents and as well as our meter replacement project that we're able to help diminish that number, reduce that number of 644. So we're hopeful that the funding the state has proposed would be enough to help all those that want to be able to replace their lead service line in Grand Forks.
Remove approval.
Move by Osowski, second by Lonsky. Further comment? Mr. Green?
Just a question, what area of town are most of these services in?
Well, it, it's really kind of in that, in our older parts of Grand Forks, in the downtown area and then kind of along Belmont and to the east and west of Belmont Road. Any home really that was built after 1950, we're not as concerned about, but those older homes definitely might not have received a replacement. Some of them may have gotten replaced when there was either a, something wrong with their service line or if we did a water main replacement, there could have been something that was replaced there. But most of just the older homes in Grand Forks.
And what, what actual lines are being replaced? The service line coming in or within the property?
Sorry, the full service line. So in Grand Forks, the service line is actually owned by the property owner, so everything from the main into the home is the property owner's, and that whole service line has to be replaced as part of the program. Or that we have the option to replace that whole service line to make it most effective.
It's been a great program. Further comments? Anyone, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Most carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Barbie. Item 3.2, Brookstone Apartments LLC Tax Incentive Application and Set Plumb Hearing Date. Mr. Phelan?
Council President Sandy and members of the committee, here's one project. We've briefed several to you, and this is one that we are going to plan to move forward with. We've gotten some positive feedback from both the school board and the county commission. And as Councilmember Berg noted, tax incentive projects, pilots are becoming more and more of an uphill battle. But this project, like it or not, they do appreciate low and moderate income housing projects, so that kind of fit within their niche. I just wanted to go, if you do move forward to the city council and thereafter, currently right now, the rec, preliminary recommendation is a 20-year 90%. And you'll hear from Curtis Regan and, and Michaela Hewitt from Baker Tilly. Right now, we're saying up to 20 years. We want to really, we're, we're relatively set on the 90%. The 20 years is, is tied to whenever their state and federal incentives come off. So what I understand is they're between 15 and 20 years. So we'd want to make it set when, when those come off. The other thing that if you guys move forward, we do a local government advisory committee on November, Monday, November 10th. And Council President Sandy and Council Vice President Sandy and Weigle represent us there. And then I would plan to go to the county commission on November 18th, school board on November 24th. It would be back here for a public hearing on December 1st. And I think this project, we, there are concerns sometimes when we build low and moderate income housing. And I think Curtis can demonstrate that this building will be well managed. It will be kept up and will provide really a, a need that we have in our community. So I'd call on Curtis to give you an overview of the project and why we think this is a good project to move forward with.
Mr. Regan, good evening.
Hey, good evening. Thank you, Todd, members of the committee. Yeah, Todd touched on kind of the key points of the project. We were here a couple of months ago with our pre-application. Not a lot has changed since then. The project itself is, is pretty similar. A couple of key things that I will point out to Todd's point about preserving the property, you know, maintaining 160 affordable units in one spot, a couple of the steps. If you look at the slideshow that, that Todd sent over to you, that was it with If you look at the slideshow that, that Todd sent over to you, that was with the, with your packet, the third page on there, project preservation efforts. One of the big things, the Lytech program, the investors who ultimately buy those tax credits will require us to have a six-month operating reserve account upfront. That includes principal and interest. In this case, that's about 1.1 million dollars that'll need to be funded upfront. That'll be a capital expenditure account, ready to go for when, when some of those expenses come up. We'll have an onsite property manager, possibly an onsite maintenance staff. We're not entirely sure if, if this will warrant a maintenance staff or not. Either way, there will be an onsite property manager five days a week on that site. The other big thing with the low-income housing tax credit program is that we will have a service coordinator onsite. It'll be about 20 hours a week. We're working on that exact number. Kind of comes down to a few, a few things with the North Dakota Housing Finance Agency, how they want us to do that, what that's going to look like. It'll probably be a few different nonprofit organizations within Grand Forks who we'll work with. They'll kind of alternate turns. Some of them will be organizations that have clients at this property, United Way being one of those. The VA is another one that I met with this week, who we'll probably work with on this. Another thing, as Ms. Lunskey pointed out earlier in the meeting, that I would like to do is get with the police department, talk to them ahead of time, put some efforts in with them as well. So those are a lot of the efforts that we're going to put in to mitigate some of those risks. I know Ms. Hewitt's going to talk about some of the financing and how we landed on the 90% 20 years. So that's all I have for you guys. If you have questions for me.
Questions for Mr. Regan?
I have one.
Yes?
Are any of the developers nonprofits?
We have a partner, Red River Regional Council, who will be a partner in the project. They're going to be an advisor. They won't be an owner in the project, but they are working with us.
So they're just an advisor, but all the people that are investing in like the developer and everything, they are not nonprofits, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you're all for-profit companies?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
To that point, one other thing, I think this was brought up the last time we were here, but I will just touch on it again. There are a few things with these programs that kind of limit what we're able to do. We're not able to come and get these incentives from you and then go and make a bunch of money. Couple of those things being the HIF program through the North Dakota Housing Finance Agency, they do cap our debt coverage ratio at 1.3. If we start, you know, if our income goes up significantly during this time when we're covered by HIF, which is anywhere from 15 to 25 years, if we get above a 1.3 debt coverage ratio, there are clawbacks. So they will come back for some of those profits at that point.
I guess who will come back for those?
North Dakota Housing Finance Agency.
Okay, but not the city of Grand Forks, right?
Correct. As Todd alluded to, if we do, after 15 years, what we're willing to do for the pilot, we'll be locked in for 15 years with the tax credit program, 15 years automatically of these affordable units. After that, there's a transition period. If we do not continue with affordable units and we go to market rate, the pilot will discontinue at that point.
Okay. I have a question, is, is this being built in an opportunity zone?
It is not.
It is not? Okay, thank you. I'm ready to hear the rest of the presentation and then I'll make comments. So thank you.
That's it for me. I know Ms. Hewitt has anything, if none of you have questions for me.
Thank you. And there were no questions other than Ms. Osowski. Thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you, guys.
And then Council President Sandy, Michaela Hewitt from Baker Tilly's online, and I would just have her go through her analysis that we attached today. So with that, I'd ask Michaela.
Good evening, Ms. Hewitt, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Council President Sandy and members of the committee. I am here to provide an overview of the financial analysis that we prepared in response to the application that the city did receive for this project. I will step back and say traditionally, I think last few projects, the financial analysis has been focused on more of the internal rate of return or rate of return to the investors for the project. In this case, because of it being an affordable housing project and the funding sources being a different mix and tied to the affordability of the project, the focus of our analysis has been more on the financial needs through the, the debt coverage and ability of the project to support debt repayment. As, as the project is proposed, 160 units providing affordable housing units at area median income levels ranging between 30%, 40%, 50% and 60% area median income levels. And the corresponding rents that are being charged at those different levels reflect the, the overall affordability for the tenants to pay the monthly rents. So as a result, the, the rents that are projected to be generated by this project are significantly lower than what you would see in a market rate project, and again, reflect the various income levels between the 30%, the 40%, 50% and 60% income levels. The project has also been, at this point, it's a, it's a one building, 160 units. I know the development team is still assembling the, the sources of funding. The current funding capital stack for the two projects is split with 120 units would be financed through 4% tax credits, meaning that there would be funding through Housing Incentive Fund, a tax-exempt bond loan requiring repayment, deferred developer fee, that's another upfront source that needs to be paid with cash flow of the project. And the remaining source is low-income housing tax credits, which provides an upfront source to the project and is, is, is through a cash flow through to the tax credit investors of the project. So the, and the other 40 units will be financed by a 9% tax credit program with a nine, with similar funding through Housing Incentive Fund, 9% loan and deferred developer fee to close the, the total gap. The total estimated development cost for both components is about 45 million. And the estimated taxable value of the project upon, of the building upon completion is closer to 26 million. And so the, the estimated property tax exemption is based on the 26 million of value that's anticipated to be created when the project's completed. The financial analysis, again, focusing on the debt coverage, is really the ability of the revenues generated by the, the rents at the various income levels, supporting the operating expenses as, as typical of a project with the remaining income, the net operating income available to support the debt service payments. And without, with the property tax exemption for the, the two respective components of the project, both the 120 unit financed through a 4% program and the 40 units financed through the 9% program. With the property tax exemption, we're seeing debt coverage, and that is, is debt coverage is the measurement of available revenues to support debt, to support debt repayment. We want to see that in excess of one times coverage. With the property tax exemption, we're seeing respective debt coverage of 1.1 and 1.04 times, showing that there's sufficient revenue to support the debt service repayments as, as structured in the two funding programs. Without the tax exemptions, the debt coverage is well below the, the minimum of one times coverage and showing debt coverage closer to 0.79 times and 0.64 times, meaning that based on the current rent structures and providing those units as affordable at the different levels, would not generate enough revenues to support repayment of the obligations, showing that the project would be infeasible without a, without the pilot as requested. As Mr. Phelan stated, the current request is for up to 90% for up to 20 years. And really, that full term of the 20 years will be contingent on the, the financing of the project, the long-term affordability for those, for those units, and the ongoing cash flow needs with certain conditions being, if, if conditions are not being met, then the term of the pilot could go away. So in summary, this project is a slightly different structure than what you might typically see for multifamily buildings, where typically we would see a combination of private equity and debt, and then reviewing the ability of the project to support the debt service and the, the financing as well as providing a repayment or equity to the investors. In this case, we're more focusing on the ability of the revenues to support the debt service payments and meet the provision of providing those units at the various income levels. So that's a short summary of our financial analysis. I'd be happy to answer any questions or turn it back over to Mr. Phelan.
Any questions for Ms. Hewitt? No, thank you, thank you so much.
Anything further?
Mr. Regan?
President Sandy.
Anyone have any thoughts regarding the Brookstone Apartments incentive application? Ms. Osowski, I'm not surprised you have ideas.
Thank you, President Sandy.
Certainly.
I, one, I don't know how I feel about Baker Tilly anymore. You know, they sit up here all the time and tell us what these businesses need, that they absolutely need these things in order for the project to get accomplished. But then we just had a project where they told us that, and then magically they were able to make it work, you know, with a lesser pilot. So I don't know really what to believe from them anymore. You know, we've, we've done a lot for them for this housing development already. We've given them rezoning, we've even granted them a parking variance to help them keep, keep their costs down, you know, so they wouldn't have to pour so many parking spots. They are also being subsidized by the state as well as federal programs. They get tax-exempt bonds and low-income tax credits. I, I have a really hard time believing that they need 90% for 20 years on this project. I don't believe in giving pilot programs to apartment complexes, but I have to say there are some positive things about this one. It is truly just an apartment building, you know, they're not adding a bunch of amenities and things like that. But I just want to make sure also that we're not over-subsidizing them. I, I understand that they can only make so much profit and, and they're held to that by the state. But I believe that that kind man that was up here earlier said that that only went on for 15 years. And so that means that, you know, we still have another five years of, of subsidizing them past even a, a federal point. And, and so I have a hard time believing that they need even that additional five years. I, I think that if this was a smaller pilot, even a 50% at 20 years, maybe down to 10 years, it could be something that I could support. But I, I just disagree with how large this pilot program is with considering all of the other incentives that they're going to get to build this. And I, I feel like a lot of these things are just passed on, you know, to the, to the taxpayer, and we're expect, like, these people don't have to pay taxes. I, I'm starting to wonder why I even pay taxes. So I, I don't know. I, I disagree. I could maybe get behind a smaller pilot, but I disagree with a 20-year, what was it, 20 at 80 or 20 at 90? 20 at 90?
90.
Yeah, I, I disagree with the 20 at 90, so I'm going to vote no.
Thank you. I, I do have to say though, that I have a lot of faith in Baker Tilly, and Ms. Hewitt's has shown to be an exceptional asset to our community. It is a little bit unfortunate that we, we, we as a community, we as a council, ask for experts to provide us their opinion. And I mean, it's certainly your welcome, Ms. Osowski is of course welcome to her own opinion, but I, Ms. Hewitt is educated and works in this space, and I certainly feel very confident that the information that she's providing us is accurate. And I, and I do actually appreciate Baker Tilly and the, the effort that they provide to our community. Further, further comments or, or thoughts? My take is, again, rational people with money make investments into businesses or you name it, with the, with the intention of making money, right? If you're, if you have the federal government issuing, selling bonds and you can get 5%, on your money on a bond, perhaps even tax-free versus making an investment, 30 million dollar investment in apartment building and only making 2% or 1% or whatever the numbers are. I think that's why we go through the exercise. And so in, in my opinion, I'm, I'm supportive not only of the, the information that we received from Baker Tilly, but I certainly think for the good of the community to get the additional housing and the low-income portion of it, I'm supportive of, of, of the pilot as stated at 20 years 90%. Mr. Friedel, yes, sir?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Good, moved by Friedel, second by Veen. Further comments? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Vice President Weigle, oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries, Osowski dissents, thank you. Right. Item 3.3, Children's Museum Development Agreement, Mr. Phelan.
Council President Sandy, committee the whole, thanks for having us again. Hey, a lot of progress on the Children's Museum along with the Ultra Sports Complex, so we're back. The last time we were here was back in October of 24. And at that point, we aligned the site to be just south of where the Ultra Sports Complex and the, as part of that Alara Center complex. But we also said we would come back to revise the agreement, number one, and number two, to recommend a land lease. And so today is kicking that off, and then with the land lease, Mr. Gostad will explain that has to go to the Jobs Development Authority because of that property acquisition. It's similar financial terms. That was before with the 10 million upfront is 6.3 million. And that would be 26 and 27 funds that would align with the construction. And then 400,000 a year from 27 to 34, which would align with construction, capital financing of the particular project. So our 10 millions is the same. Years are different, completion dates are different. In the meantime, you know, there's a four to five acre parcel. We put in a lot of offsite infrastructure not only for the Ultra Sports Complex and for the Red River BMX, but also for the Children's Museum. So a lot of progress has been made. So with that, I'd ask Mr. Gostad to go over the revised agreement. And then also I want to invite Ms. Mayor here is, is here on behalf of the Children's Museum for, for any further updates and discussions regarding this agreement and what, what they're doing, and such a positive vein on the fundraising side.
All right, thank you, President Sandy and members of the committee. I will briefly go through this because you've already seen this agreement once before. It was approved as far as the funding was concerned, but this, the approval was when the location was on Ultra property close to the Choice Fitness Facility. The changes relate to the, the JDA becoming involved and having to now lease the property because the JDA is the owner of that parcel near the, or now being constructed Altars